Good evening and welcome to the Isleta Independent School District's Meeting of the Board of Trustees. The meeting of the Board of Trustees is a meeting of the board that the public is allowed to attend. As provided is Isleta ISD policy, BED. We invite members of the public to make comments during the citizens' input portion at the start of the meeting according to the instructions provided with the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into discussion on matters in the citizens' input. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting, often attended by students, and ask that we all conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the Isleta Independent School District. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:03 PM. We have a quorum with Soltero Ramirez, Charlie Bustillos, Mike Rosales, Connie Woodruff, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Trustee Hagerty and trustee Lucero are unable to join us and are considered excused. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, and then posting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by the junior ROTC color guard from Del Valle High School. The color guard commander is Cadet Command Sergeant Major Judith Chavez. The other color guard members are Cadet Second Lieutenant Dulce Jaime, I hope, Cadet Second Lieutenant Kane Reyes, and Cadet Sergeant Major Angel Leza. The pledge leader is Cadet Second Lieutenant Leslie Zambrano. Would you please stand for the presentation of colors, the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Texas Pledge of Allegiance, and in the moment of silence, please remain standing until the cadets have departed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, please join me in the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please join me in the moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Del Valle High School Junior ROTC Color Guard. They were great. Let's give them another hand, please. Dr. De La Torre, do we have recognitions and introductions this evening?
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, and esteemed guests. Yes, at this time, I'd like to invite our Chief Human Capital Management Officer, Mrs. Bobby Russell Garcia, to do our recognitions and introductions.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. We have three recognitions for you this evening. At this time, we ask all trustees to please come down to the front of the dais for the presentation. Audience members, please remain seated until the recognitions are complete. Our first recognition is in honor of Eastwood High School senior Salem Hernandez, who is receiving a $1,000 college scholarship from the Texas Association of School Boards Energy Cooperative. This scholarship is one of three provided by the co-op to select TASB members who sent representatives to its 2022 delegate assembly. From our board, one trustee, two trustees attended the assembly, Vice President Charlie Bustillos, who attended as a delegate, and Secretary Catherine Lucero, who attended as an alternate. As our scholarship winner, Salem truly represents the best of Isleta ISD's class of 2023. She has been on the Trooper tennis team since her freshman year. She is a member of Student Council and National Honor Society, and she serves as an Alzheimer's Association Young Advocate. Salem is a Hispanic Scholarship Fund scholar, Science National Honor Society member, and was recognized by the College Board as a Hispanic Recognition Scholar and AP Scholar. She has applied to attend Barnard College, Rice University, and Columbia University, and plans to pursue a degree in computer or exercise science. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a big round of applause to our 2023 TASB Energy Cooperative Scholarship recipient, Eastwood High School senior Salem Hernandez. She is accompanied by Principal Bonita Torres. At this time, Board Vice President Bustillos will present Salem with the check to commemorate her achievement. Let's hear it one more time for Salem. Our next recognition honors one of our outstanding administrators, Parkland Elementary School Principal Dana Boyd. Every year, the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association, or TEPSA, honors one colleague from each of the state's 20 regions for exceptional service in advancing the principalship, TEPSA, and serving as a voice for Texas students. Not only was Ms. Boyd announced as the winner for Region 19's 2023 Tepson of the Year Award, but she will also serve as the TEPSA Vice President in the 2023-24 school year. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me congratulate our 2023 Tepson of the Year from Parkland She is accompanied by Associate Superintendent of Elementary Schools Irene Ahumada. Let's hear it again for Dana Boyd. Tonight's final recognition is in honor of two Valle Verde early college high school students who won Best in Show in the Senior Division at the Sun Country Regional Science Fair, sponsored by Insights Museum. This win qualified these students to advance to the International Science and Engineering Fair in Dallas, the world's largest pre-college STEM competition. At this fair, more than 1,500 students from 70 countries and territories will compete for scholarships, tuition grants, internships, science field trips, and grand prizes. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me congratulate our science fair winners from Valle Verde Early College High School, Ana Sofia Chavaria, and Daisy Coralejo. They are accompanied by teachers Sarah Welsh Once again, let's hear it for the Spartans. This concludes our recognitions for tonight.
Okay, Ms. Matheson, do we have citizens' input this evening?
Yes, sir, President Ochoa, we do. We have Richard Dayhube, Climate Charter is the topic.
Good afternoon, members of the board, superintendent. By the way, congratulations on all the success of the district. I know it takes a lot of hard work. What a great way to start the meeting. For the record, Richard Dayhube, Thunderbird Management Consulting. I would like to thank you all for this opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. Regarding the Climate Charter, you probably have heard of it by now. If you have not, you will now. Proposition K, as it's known, on the May 6 ballot. I know the district is unable to take a formal position, but I would like to take this opportunity to share some critical information with you and your families, your constituents, your employees, your taxpayers. However well-intentioned the petitioners were in composing the language for this ballot, there are unintended consequences should it pass, severe consequences, that will impact our taxpayers, our economic development efforts, and our future prosperity as a community. We all want cleaner air. We all want the best for our children and our grandchildren. Ironically, these are already efforts being put forth by the city to foster and support practices in public and private sector both to improve our environment, but without overburdening our citizens with higher taxes and utility rates. Unfortunately, the petitioners insisted that the Climate Charter appear as one ballot, one ballot item, rather than breaking it down into eight simple-to-understand sections to allow us to vote for or against each separately, because there are some positive things within the document. But as a result, if you as a voter vote yes, you need to know you are voting just on one particular area that will be onerous to all of us, to require the city, and I quote, "to use all means possible to acquire El Paso Electric, currently valued at $9 billion." It is a privately-held company, not for sale, by the way. I encourage all El Pasoans to vote nay on Prop K, May 6. Early voting begins on April 24. And for more information, for more literature, for questions, you can reach out to the El Paso Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for your time.
Dr. De La Torre, do we have any reports for us this evening?
Excuse me, President Ochoa, we have two more on citizens' input. My apologies.
I'm sorry. I jumped the gun.
Is this at the podium or off to the side? I think it's off to the side. Okay.
We have Lori Perales, and the topic is YW LA, potential school closure.
Good evening, board and Dr. De La Torre. I'm speaking this evening to advocate keeping the YLA school doors open. I'm a parent of two YLA students and a YISD district taxpayer. I voted in support of the 2004, 2015, and 2019 bonds. Public schools across the country are facing Public schools across the country are facing similar challenges as our district: declining enrollment, loss of funding, loss to charter schools. Birth rates also across the country are the lowest they've been in 30 years, three decades. So I don't foresee this issue getting any easier. YISD has been above the curve in addressing these issues with their right-sizing policies, consolidating schools. We've moved cohorts of students to wonderful facilities. We have beautiful campuses, dedicated teachers and staff. Wyla is a unique campus in that their displaced students would not be moved together. They're going to be parceled out to their, you know, former campuses. The current high school students would also be at a disadvantage in that they're not able to qualify now for the early college schools or magnets or specialized programs that they would have had interest, these high-achieving students. Board members, I don't envy your position at all. While being good stewards of taxpayer money, I know you must also weigh the costly effects school closures have on the academic outcomes of displaced students, as well as ensuring equity in education for all of our students. Wyla provides this equity because they provide a rigorous college prep curriculum and educational support to traditionally marginalized students. Wyla, as an A-rated campus, it received a score of 95 and all seven distinctions. It currently has an enrollment of 369 students, of which 94% are Hispanic, almost 50% are economically disadvantaged, and 100%, as you know, are young women. Your return on investment, just on our first, we had one graduating class, the return on investment far outweighs our expenditure. Our graduating class had 100% college acceptance, $11.5 million in merit-based scholarships, and we had two, three Quest Bridge Scholars, two Gates Foundation, one Terry, one Dell, one Dream. Currently this year, we already have two Terrys, one UTIP Academic Scholarship. Beforehand, I would like to just say, give thanks and kudos to Ms. Villalobos and all her staff for their unwavering support and commitment to our students and our community. I asked, when we signed up for Wyla, our students signed a commitment that would pledge that they would be there for seven years, that we would allow them to provide this opportunity for our daughters. I'm asking that YISD, that we keep our commitment to those girls, and at minimum, at least allow the current ones to graduate. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Now we call Nisa Harden, Choir State Equity and Funding.
Good evening, President Ochoa, Dr. De La Torre, board members. My name is Nisa Harden, and I am the proud parent of a senior at Hanks High School, and he, I am proud to say, scored a one, a perfect score, at UIL solo and ensemble. His piece was memorized and sung in Italian. This now qualifies him to go to state. Unfortunately, YISD does not send choir students who have qualified to state, nor do they do that for their orchestra students either. We are the only district in the city that does not send choir and orchestra students to state to compete at UIL. That is a shameful thing. At Hanks High School, I am proud to share with you that robotics, speech and debate, dual acting, wrestling, mariachi, baseball, softball have all gone out of town to represent Hanks at state competitions, and that's just in this semester alone. What was missing from that list? Choir students, orchestra students. Five days ago, I have submitted an open records request. I want to know about, I want to be informed of how student expenditures are being paid by the other activities that have excluded choir and orchestra from sending, being sent to state in Austin. My hope and intent, because this is a very simple solution, is that you will do the right thing, a thing of excellence, and send qualifying UIL students in choir and in orchestra, not just from Hanks, but from across the entire district to represent this district at state competition. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Matheson?
That's all we have.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. De La Torre, do we have any reports for us this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the Board. We will begin with the quarterly update on the metrics for CareSalus. Mr. Tyler Chamnis, who will virtually present the data, should be available to us on the There he is. Presentation. It's not coming through.
Do we have the slides available, or I can share my screen and pull it up as well?
Give us a moment. We can see and hear you. You just happen to be on the absolute furthest screen. There you are. The floor is yours, sir.
All right. Thank you so much. Good evening, Dr. De La Torre and members of the Board. Thank you so much for having me. Tyler Chamnis, your primary point of contact from CareSalus. Really excited to be here again to share an update this quarter. We have a really exciting presentation to update you all on. So if we could go ahead and pull up the slides for the board update, or I can share my screen and share it myself if that's easier.
Yes, Tyler, if you could, please.
Yes, absolutely. Just need the ability to share my screen, and then I'll go ahead and pull them up.
Ready.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. So here's our update for April. Here's our mission statement, CareSalus. We are tireless allies on a mission to make access to mental health care easy, inclusive, and dignified. We exist to connect people to the support they need with respect and trust. There's two primary pathways of care coordination that we offer your community. We have the warm handoff, which are those direct referrals from your school mental health staff that are done through an internal dashboard. And then we have CareMatch, which is the proprietary link for East Letta, where students, staff, and families can anonymously and confidentially get matched up with local providers for both mental health and substance use treatment on their own from the comfort of their home. And of course, the care companions are the heart and soul of CareSalus. These are the individuals that are really a workhorse for the community. They're the ones who pick up the phone and call the providers on behalf of the families, so they'll wait on hold, check availability, navigate the insurance, make sure that providers specialize in the specific needs of the family, do all that vetting for you, help to schedule the appointment and follow-up afterwards to make sure that it's a good fit for the family. I wanted to touch on some of the data from this school year. So we have had 445 warm handoffs, and this was the data as of Friday, so the 7th. 445 warm handoffs. In February, we saw the most warm handoffs that we've seen so far this school year, that's 74. And again, these are those direct referrals from counselors, psychologists, nurses, social workers. We also had 153 family-initiated cases. These are the self-referred cases, people that reaching out to us directly to get help with either mental health or substance use treatment. From these cases, we've had 263 confirmed appointments since July, which is really fantastic to see. An additional 226 anonymous searches. These people were matched up with resources that meet their criteria, and they could have reached out to us for a family-initiated case, or reached out to those providers on their own as well. And you can see there's over 25,000 communications that our team has made and received on behalf of your community in an effort to coordinate care for them. Right? As of Friday, there were currently 67 cases that were still open and pending that we're working on, hoping to get those appointed. And in the spirit of transparency, we wanted to highlight why those cases that weren't appointed were closed. And so we had 89 of those cases closed because the families declined services for one reason or another, and then the remainder of the cases, 179 cases closed as client unreachable. We were not able to get ahold of the family. We do have a follow-up process to make sure that we are reaching out to them on a regular basis, but eventually we'll close it as we do not want to harass the family. We want to make sure that we're respecting whatever they have going on in their lives. Something that you might find interesting, 57% of appointments this school year have actually been telehealth, and 42, almost 43% of cases have been for in-person services. And that can be for a variety of reasons. Some people like the comfort of their home and the accessibility of telehealth, the convenience of it, and other reasons could be because of wait times. And telehealth is just a lot more, it's a lot faster, it's easier to get connected to a provider. So there's a lot of factors at play there, but I found that really interesting. The appointment rate so far this school year has been 44%, which is fantastic. That's what we like to shoot for, the national average. Someone given a list of resources and confirming that they've had an appointment is only 18%. So this is about 150% higher than that national average. I also pulled some data on the providers, and your wonderful mental health team helped aggregate this as well and guide the direction of the presentation. So there are 528 mental health providers in our database within a 25-mile radius of the district. 199 of those providers offer telehealth services, and with telehealth, you can actually tap into resources across the entire state. And there are 2,454 Texas providers in our database that offer telehealth services as well. We, from those providers, those appointments this year, we've sent out 283 follow-ups to families of those, to ask about the providers of those. We have received 211 responses, and 179 of those responses were a thumbs up on the provider, which is an 84%, almost an 85% approval rating on those providers, which is really fantastic. We know there's always room for improvement, but really great data so far. Couple other interesting data points here at the bottom. Average time to match to providers that meet the criteria of the family is about five days right now, and average time to the first appointment takes place is about 28 days. So that's from the time that the case is open to the time the first appointment takes place, about 28 days, which tells me that there definitely are providers who are impacted in the area and that there are wait times with providers, because we'd like to see that closer to three weeks on average, but that might be an indication of why there's been so many appointments with telehealth, just because the providers in your area are impacted and at capacity. We're doing everything we can to maximize the resources in the community and keep it local whenever possible. I also wanted to pull up the utilization from when we started this partnership last school year, which just was in March of last year. And so one thing that really stood out to me was when the district initially did a big press release, there was a big spike in anonymous searches when people were first finding out about the service. And so that's always a good best practice is to do the press release, do the messaging and marketing, and increase awareness through the CareMatch portal. Here's the breakdown of the demographics, and this tells a story of who's reaching out for help and why they're reaching out for help, not dramatically different from previous quarters where I've provided update, but what I love to see is the good mix of the age groups. You see adults, adolescents, and children all getting help, which is great. And the reasons why people are reaching out for help, anxiety and depression are reasons one and two. That's very common. But then we see trauma as reason number three, and that's relatively high compared to averages across the country. Disruptive behavior is following that, which is very common. And then marital, that could include couples counseling, family counseling, and then suicidal ideation. Almost 15% of the cases have reported that they're dealing with some type of suicidal ideation. It was also a little bit high, but this is really valuable data to help target these population groups and send out messaging and marketing to address them and let them know that these resources are available. In terms of who is helping these families, you see that 25% of families reported that they have Medicaid, an additional 12% reporting that they do not have insurance. And so there, of course, there's a lot of other families that do have private insurance, but we really want to make sure that these families with public insurance or no insurance are getting connected to the appropriate resources, which are some of these providers here. So from those confirmed appointments, these are the top 10 providers that have been accepting appointments. You see programs and clinics, you see private practices, a lot of people stepping up in your community to make sure that everyone's getting taken care of, which is fantastic to see. We talk a little bit about feedback from staff and families. Previously, we have received more responses, and the numbers are staying really high. It's really impressive, great to see. So the net promoter score, which ranges from negative 100 to positive 100, has actually gone up since the last time we did one of these updates, and it's now at a 91, and we have now received 58 responses from staff, meaning that they gave us a nine or a 10 in order to be a promoter. Anything below that would take away from that score. Here's some of your recent testimonials from staff. So one staff member said, "Very simple process to help our families get connected to care and mental health help." Another person said, "It provides the best assistance to your family in need." Now, from the family perspective, the net promoter score, it's a smaller sample size. We've had 18 responses now, but that's up quite a bit from the previous report, and then NPS has stayed very high at 94. And some of those testimonials, I really enjoyed reading. One said, "My favorite part about the referral process is the time saved. We know people are busy. We want to help them as much as we can, save that time. It's a long process." And then another family said, "The referral process helped to cut down on much of the legwork involved in finding a professional caregiver, and that's really what we're here to do." So appreciate that being recognized there. We had some recommendations for continued success, and your district is doing a fantastic job of all these things. It's just reminders. So refresher trainings, we'll definitely work with your team to schedule those for the fall when there's new staff, and just reminders for the returning staff. Staff well-being, you know, this service is available for not only the staff, but their loved ones as well, so we want to make sure that they know that this is a benefit available to them. Community events that we can take part in, share it within networks, both internally and externally, social media. We have great templates that you're able to take advantage of. I mentioned the press release earlier, distributing flyers, the board report, which we're doing now, and so a lot of good best practices that we can help with there. And some of those templates that we're able to provide have great images that you're able to use in newsletters, emails, social media, and everything's available in both English and Spanish. This is just one example. All right, and that's everything I had for my reports. I'll go ahead and pause there and see if there are any questions.
Yes, could you go back to your presentation? I think it's the second chart or the third chart where you presented from month to month.
This one here.
That one. It'd be a lot easier if you put this in a bar chart.
Okay.
That way, I could see if there's any trends at all, depending on the season. You know, like at February, there was a pretty good spike, as well as January.
Right.
Okay. We didn't have one for the previous year, but I just want to see if there's any trends, or have you seen any?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, the school year is cyclical, right? So during the winter, we'll see a dip. We'll see there's fewer referrals during winter break, during summer break, but our service is 24/7, 365, so will be available. Anytime that there are screenings done, like mental health screenings or SEL screening, or SEL screenings, there can be an uptick in referrals after that. So there definitely are trends and insights that we can pull from this data. And a bar graph would be a great way to show that. So I'll definitely run that up the ladder and see if we can provide that for you.
It'll make it a lot easier for us to look at the data from that perspective. Could you, can you elaborate what that communication saved? What is that?
Yeah, great question. So these are the key KPIs that we have on the report here. So the communications saved are the communications that our team is making on behalf of your community. So these are outbound phone calls, emails, text messages, video chats to families, to staff, to providers in an effort to coordinate care for the family. So communications that we're making on behalf of your community. Inbound interactions are going to be the communications that we're receiving from your community. So inbound phone calls, emails, text messages, video chats, et cetera.
Which communication channels are more, are used more by the community?
Yeah, that's a great question. So text is probably the most common, actually, especially when it comes to parents. Text is the most common. And then with the providers, it's kind of split between email and phone call, whatever their preference is. And then with staff, a lot of it is email and phone call as well. But text is the most popular with the families. We're actually adding, we're updating our utilization report. I was hoping it'd be ready by the time for this report, but it's not quite there yet. And we're going to be adding a chart showing the types of communication and the time of day that they're happening. So in the fall, when we provide the next update, I should have more data for you in regards to that.
So when somebody from the community calls, it's twenty-four hours?
Correct, yes.
There's also here, I was going to ask you on that total appointments into care, you show there a total of two hundred and sixty-three, which is fine. My question is on the, on why it takes twenty-eight days to make an appointment? I know that, yeah, some doctors are really backlogged. But is there, like, we have somebody in the community that has a high priority risk that is happening to them at that time? Do we or do you follow any procedures to assist that person to get an appointment as quickly as possible?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So we do have a high severity team, we have an escalation team. So depending on the need of the family, depending on some of the communications that are made, we'll rush, if they're looking for an inpatient program, they need something really quickly, those typically will open up and happen a lot faster. And this is for the time for the actual appointment to take place, not necessarily to schedule it, right? It might only take a week or two to schedule that appointment, but the first availability of that provider is a couple of weeks after that. So then it ends up taking a little bit more time. But there's a lot of factors at play. It's not only the availability of providers, but, you know, the responsiveness of the families, the responsiveness of the providers, and of course, the work that we're able to do as well. So several factors that play into that.
Could you show that next time? That you actually acted on some of these high-risk calls or messages or whatever and got them the healthcare that they needed as quickly as possible?
Sure, yeah. How would you like us to report that? So you think, seeing, like, of those high severity cases, what the timeframe looked like for those?
Yeah. It's basically, you know, I'm just more, well, I'm interested in all of them, but the high risk, especially for mental health, I think it's, it's a big part of our community at this time. We're all under stress. And I just want to make sure that, or whatever it is that is high risk, that they need to get that help. Whatever you, your staff designates that, we're interested as to see how that is handled and what the percentage of that is.
Yeah, that's a great point. I'm making note of that now and definitely be able to provide some more information next time around.
Yeah, okay. On this chart here, I always just, on your one, two, three, fourth bullet, that you had two hundred and eighty-three appointments, you received two hundred and eleven responses, a hundred and seventy-nine responses where they thumbs up. What does that actually mean?
Yes, this is, this is a follow-up after the appointment is scheduled. So once we've confirmed the appointment, we follow up with the families afterwards to say, you know, how did it go? How was your appointment? Did you like that provider? And then they'll give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down, which will prompt the next action. And so a thumbs up is great. We'll check in again a couple of weeks later to make sure they're still happy with that option and they want to continue. If they do happen to give us a thumbs down and they say, you know what, this wasn't the best fit for us, we reopen the case right away and continue to reach out to additional providers to help them reschedule with someone else.
So this is just like a follow-up assessment of how the response went with, as far as the appointment for these families?
Yeah, so it's more of an indicator of how they felt about the match, how they felt about that provider that they got connected to, and if they felt like it was a good fit or not.
Okay. Also, on the average time to match, it's five days. Why does, is it five working days or is it five calendar days?
Yeah, these are, these are both calendar days. So that's, from the time that we open the case, we do the pre-screening, call providers, check availability, make sure they take the family's insurance, and make sure it's a good fit. Then we're following up with two to three options that meet those criteria. And that's what match means. So that means that we've done all the vetting, done all the legwork, done the pre-screening with the family, and then come back to the family with two or three options that meet their needs. And that's, that's when we're ready to start helping them schedule the appointment at that point.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Yes, sir, Mr. Rosales.
Would you be able to elaborate on the prior screen? And the, what, your points were very well taken, Mr. Ochoa. But on this family-initiated cases, the reason being is that several months back, there was, I had a call from a situation. And can you elaborate on the family-initiated cases? Is this a point where a parent is fearful of their child? You know, I just need a little bit more definition.
No, so this just is a self-referred case. So this is someone that's reaching out to us directly, rather than getting referred by a school counselor. They're picking up the phone, they're calling CareSalus and say, hey, I'm a parent at Isleta and my kid needs help. And so we're opening a case for them right away, starting to do that care coordination. So it's essentially just the self-referred cases that the family is initiating.
I, I think this work is very important in the times that we're living in, unfortunately. And I appreciate your efforts. I'd like to even, I'd like to get more information as we go along, if at all possible. Thank you.
Yeah, it's truly been an honor to work with you all. It's been fantastic, and I hope to continue to serve the community for years to come.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chinas.
All right, thank you so much.
At this time, I'd like to invite our very own Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Brenda Chacon, to give us an academic readiness report this evening.
Good evening, President Tchoa, Dr. Delatorre, members of the board. I'm going to wait for the presentation to come up. I'm going to leave you in suspense for a few minutes here. While they pull up the presentation tonight, we're here to present the work that our academic team has done from the spring as we prepare for STAR. As you know, STAR and EOC testing starts next Tuesday, April eighteenth, and it will go on through May fifth. So we have a couple of weeks of testing coming up. And we wanted to definitely show you all the progress that we've made on STAR two-point-oh. As you may or may not be aware of, the state of Texas is transitioning to a new test and a new accountability system. It is called STAR two-point-oh. The STAR redesign is based on improving the alignment between the classroom and what's how it's actually tested. So in a nutshell, you can see the different graphics there. Students will no longer be tested in a multiple-choice A, B, C, D. They will have various methods to answer questions, such as drag-and-drop, selecting, graphing, different ways via technology to assess students. So they will also include writing in all RLH tests. So writing used to be tested only in fourth and seventh grade. It will now be tested third through EOC, all the way through English two. So every single grade level will have writing. In addition, it's going to be cross-curricular. And what we mean by that is, science, for example, will have reading that'll reference into, they'll have to answer writing questions, science questions across the board. So math, science will no longer just be the problems in multiple choice, but they'll have to actually write the explanation of the question that is being asked or read about science. Yes, sir.
How are they going to look at all these responses?
Okay, and I can show you that as we go along. So this is a big move. The state of Texas, this came through one House legislation about two years ago, almost four years ago, actually, before COVID, that the legislation asked them to change the way that we were assessing students through multiple choice. So they have, and this is the year that they're going to implement STAR two-point-oh. So it has also moved to online. So everything is online for testing. And so how we've been preparing, because exactly many of you are educators and how we've been preparing our teachers and our students, we're happy to share with you how we've been doing that. In addition, I will just remind everyone that we also, on top of welcoming STAR two-point-oh, we also will welcome a new accountability system. So the way that we were rated last year is not the same way we will be rated this year. Unfortunately, that is still being thought out, so we do not have final accountability measures and how we will be rating. That is why the district will not receive a rating how we usually do in the summer. You'll receive it in September, is when you'll receive final ratings because TEA is still making adjustments. They're still flying the plane and building it as we speak on how schools and districts will be rated for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So in preparation, we've been working on this all year. We've had monthly, what we call virtual sessions, that were provided to all teachers, administrators. All our sessions were recorded. We've been meeting with them every single month. As we get updates, we've been rolling them out across the organization. This has been an interesting process because we didn't, we do not have all the information upfront. So every month, we've received a snippet here and there of how and when students will be attested and how they'll be rated. So to answer your question, Mr. Ochoa, they did release, TEA did release some practice sites, right? So there is a STAR two-point-oh practice site. I'm not going to show you, but if you click on the PowerPoint that you received, you can actually click on the practice site, and you can see how students will be assessed in these multi-various question types. But it does include graph and drop, drag-and-drop, it does include graph paper. So for our math people on the board, students will actually have to graph an equation versus before they would just answer A, B, C, D. So they, it's exactly how you picture it. They get the graph, they plot the first point, and they plot the second point using their mouse. They've also talked about the trackpad, the screen size, the tools. So we had had numerous types to show on this practice sites as they've been released. Again, not everything was released at the beginning of the school year. A lot of it has been released recently for our teachers and our students, but they have been practicing and we have been embedding. We had to change our assessments as well. So as soon as a practice question gets released, we embed it into our own assessments so that students and teachers are very familiar with all the changes. Through every leadership meeting, as you know, Dr. Delatorre meets with principals every month. Okay, and every month, we've had numerous topics on everything from STAR redesign. I won't read it all on House Bill forty-five, forty-five, which also was a big impact on us. Telpass, assessment data, working with Lead Forward, who is a company that we work with, to prepare. But these are all the different pieces that we've been doing to support our work as we transition into STAR two-point-oh. By grade level, we implemented here, and wherever you see the blue is where you can actually click on it, and you can see the work that our academic team has been doing. But different subject areas, this is how we've supported STAR two-point-oh and how we've supported every single grade level. So for example, we've done make and takes for teachers on what extended response will look like. So extended response is where the students are asked the question, and they have to answer it via writing, not a multiple choice, and explain the thought process behind the question. So we've been training teachers all year on exactly what it looks like, how to be prepared across the board. The same thing for middle school. You can see the same, we've done the same thing for middle school, including all grade levels. We've focused on seventh grade heavily. And we've embedded everything we can, from the day reviews to the rocking reviews, to the bell ringers. We've written curriculum for our teachers to make sure that they have what they need. And in high school, you can also see the work that the high school team and Ms. Rendon and all the associates have done as well. Through our intervention blogs, whether it be advisory or during the day intervention, we've written those interventions. So again, the teachers execute that plan and meet with their students and provide them the intervention that they need. Same thing with Telpass. Telpass also is going through some changes on top of STAR two-point-oh. This year, writing used to be rated by the teacher, right? So for any student who's EB, this year it will be artificially scored. So artificial intelligence will score Telpass. Yes, sir.
Again, how is that being scored?
Well, it's a very complex, I'm assuming, through the programming, through Cambium, so.
So it's a, it's a computer that's.
It's all artificially scored. It's all artificially scored.
So, so whoever programmed this can pretty much be subjective on how they assess these writings and the Telpass, everything?
It is no longer human scored, for sure, so.
Well, it is, in a way it is, because it was programmed by a human.
Right, it was programmed by a human, but all of these different multiple choices will be scored through AI, artificial intelligence.
Not multiple choices, I'm talking about the writing part.
Right, the writing will be scored through artificial intelligence.
Is that like my spell check on my computer?
Yep, you're right. So it's similar to SAT, right?
Has this been done before?
This will be the first, it's been tested. So TEA does provide field tests that have been given through. Last year, students received some of these field test questions. Has it been tested in the mass? No.
So it's going to open up a lot of questions after this assessment is conducted.
It is definitely an area.
I'm just, you know, asking these questions because, you know, they say, oh, it's the computer, but the computer's programmed by a person, and that person has already summed, is very subjective on how they write those programs. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, how are they looking into these programs to make sure that they are fair and equal throughout the state and for everyone?
So I can tell you the response that we've received from TEA because we have asked these questions, right? Especially a community like ours, you can't compare it to a community.
No, no.
Even the speaking. So what we've been told, and the response we've been told is that it's been field-tested throughout the state, and they've collected that data. So what we've been explained is, for example, they'll test question A on math. Depending how the students responded on that field question, depend, then, I'm assuming someone at TEA makes the decision to say, yes, this question made it, and this question doesn't, based on how students responded throughout field testing. They've done field testing for the last couple, two to three years, I would say, except for the exception of the COVID year because we did not test. But it is definitely a big change for us. It was a huge change for us, having to switch over curriculum, assessment for your teachers, for your students.
I'd be interested to look at that field test data and see where exactly that they conduct these tests.
I can send you their website, concluding this presentation.
Especially demographics and everything from those areas as well because, you know, it's like me going to go write something for somebody that has a PhD in literature, and I can tell you, I'm not even going to come close. And if they program it to have it somewhere close to that, I might not pass it.
And you're correct. So not every district is selected to field test, right? So what happens is, and we don't know how they select them, but we are selected, for example, in fifth grade, and Dallas ISD might be selected for third grade. and Dallas ISD might be selected for third grade and vice versa. So how they come up with their data to, to test, I have, I am, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm just asking you and the staff and Dr. Latore, just to, as we go through this, that we line up our questions so we can have them, uh, after the whole, um, assessment is conducted, so we can get some answers on this. We, I just don't want to accept it for what it is, uh, especially the first time. Yeah, had it been 10 years already, eh, I could probably say that they worked out the, the kinks on it. But first time, uh, I'm a little leery about how they're going to do this, especially for, for these, uh, writing, um, parts of this test.
I will tell you, we are also leery as it's going into the unknown because this is new to us too.
Well, I, like I said, we just got to, um, help ourselves in asking the right questions as, as we go through this. And because they're going to have, um, they're going to have to make a post-assessment on how this all went and I'm sure they're going to get a lot of questions.
And that's probably why the standards have not been set yet by T E A. So currently we do not know what is a passing score across the board for anything.
And especially because this is going to impact the ratings of all the districts.
Yeah, it, it's a big impact. It's a huge shift. Um, we do feel, based on the presentation and the information that we've done our very best to make sure that our teachers are equipped with the tools, the students. Nonetheless, it is the unknown in next Tuesday is the first time that our students are assessed this way. Uh, do we feel prepared as best as we can? But it will be new, if, yes.
Especially it's been fed to us piecemeal, you know? We just don't have that whole picture and here we are already getting ready to test next week. And, and I'm sure you and yourself and your staff and our teachers have done the best they can based on the information we got so far, which is limited in some, some respect. But everybody's in the same boat as far as Texas. So we'll just have to wait and see how it.
Yes, everybody, um, Tuesday will be a, a whole new day for us. But, um, again, we're confident in our teachers. We're confident in our principals and our academic team. The ladies have been working really hard to make sure that the information we do have has been disseminated across the organization and we've supported, as you can see with the various information in the PowerPoints.
And I'm sorry I've taken so long on this. But when you do, we do conduct these tests, do we have to tie in to some, some server and, and T E A?
We, we, so T E A switched from E T S as many years ago to now Cambium. Cambium is their testing, uh, company that they use. It's, it's all online, um, the servers. We don't connect necessarily to a server as we used to anymore. It's all done, uh, via cloud, I guess. Um, it's via website, but it is Cambium who's serving their assessments now.
Have we tested this before next week?
Yes, we've been using interim, our interim assessments, um, are Cambium-based. So the students have had some practice with what's available. Uh, they have not had, the interim assessments have not tested the writing, either the extended response or the short constructed response. We've done all that in-house. So for anybody testing, reading, uh, English Language Arts next week, that will be the first time the student sees that piece in the language arts test. But we have been using their testing platform.
Because I did have some experience with, uh, previous. Uh, we had some experience in that happening that, uh, the students couldn't log in.
Mm-hmm.
And that's everything. I mean, the testing, the whole schedule was just, was a disarray because nobody, not everybody could start at the same time.
Right, and if you remember a few years ago, the system crashed. And so that was also a time that.
And they were there all day long without lunch.
Yeah.
And, and so anyway, those are just things that could happen. Hopefully they don't happen, run smoothly. But we will, I do have a lot of questions on how this, this whole assessment will be, um, conducted and what the feedback will be from across the state.
Yes, um, we're happy to, I, you have the link, the interactive link. I'm happy to sit down with any of you, just take you through the practice sites and everything else. Um, it's a lot of information, but again, the purpose of today was just to show.
No, no, I understand, but those are my, you know, my concerns as to how this is all going to pan out at the end of the year because we're going to be rated based on this. And, uh, so is everybody else. So T E A has a big task on their hands.
You are correct. We're not exempt, they are not waiving. Um, so we will all be rated at the end of the year, but.
I'm sorry I interrupted you so much.
No, it's okay.
You brought some good information that I, I wasn't even aware of at this point. So, uh, it's good to know.
But again, I will tell you, you have great teachers, great students, a great leadership team, great academic team, the associates who have been working really hard with the information we have to be prepared. And we look forward to next Tuesday.
No, my doubt doesn't, is not in our ability to, to do what we need to do. It's more of what happens after all this goes out and who does the ratings and the, uh, well, not the rating, I'm not so much worried about the ratings, the assessment for every other students, you know?
I, I know Superintendent, we are a little worried about ratings just because it's a new way to assess, but I have, again, full confidence in our team.
Okay, and I think some of the preliminary data, um, based on interim assessments, formative assessments, practice assessments, um, we're going to be close.
See what, I didn't hear that.
We're going to be close. Uh, you know, we, we take, uh, B and A rated very, very seriously. Um, there are, uh, neighboring districts, other leaders who, uh, I think downplay the importance of the rating. Um, I think it's a mistake. Uh, whether or not, uh, the rating is, uh, valid and captures what's happening in a school district is beside the point. Um, I prefer to pursue it aggressively and if we get there, um, I, I mean, I have all the faith and confidence in Dr. Chacon and the team, uh, to get us there. It's that, the old joke I always tell, when the two men are walking through the forest and they come upon a grizzly bear and one of them bends over and starts tightening his shoelaces and the other one says, what are you doing? You're never going to outrun the grizzly bear. And he says, I don't have to outrun the grizzly bear, I just have to outrun you, right? And so we're all in the same boat. We may not have to outrun the grizzly bear, but we're going to outrun people in our neighbors.
Well, I mean, uh.
Well, let me, let me just add something if I may, before I forget, because I do tend to forget. You know, I, in, in these past eight years, I've, I've learned tremendous amounts that I was unaware of because my forte was not the school business, if you will. But as I've, as I've gone through the eight years, repeatedly, the, the, the undercurrent of teachers is there's such a load. Now, I look at it from a perspective of preparing our children to the best, to the best of our ability. I have no doubts about our qualifications and the people that work in this, in this building, your administration, none whatsoever. What I do question, it's our responsibility as representatives to stand up now because are we teaching the people that create the, the, are we teaching for a purpose of those that create the test? Or are we teaching our children to be better citizens as they walk into the world? The question that I, this is, I've had it in my mind, and you can talk about percentages and we take this, now you're talking about subjectivity, just by what, what I hear. And, and I guess my question to you, to all of us, is, is this another load for our teachers? I don't care for this type of approach. We, as citizens of this country, need to stand up and say enough is enough because there's only one reason these things happen to come about, in, in my opinion. Somebody is making a tremendous amount of money in the preparation of testing and on and on and on and on. And what, of what benefit is it to our children? What, of what benefit is it in the border area that has problems very unique to other areas? And I feel that we need to monitor this thing. And Dr. Latore, I'm not a rebel, but sometimes I have to fight for what I believe. And, and the eight years that I've been around, there've been certain things that I've learned through the people outside of El Paso and how they look at things. And, uh, I, I, I don't know, I, I get, I, I'm, the only thing that I can say, I feel frustrated because I don't know if this is just another ploy or is it really going to benefit our children? And that's a question that I have for all of us. And you're the leader. Uh, I would, you know, I'm, I can't sit back and just say, well, maybe this is, nah. Eight years and to, and to, and, and to put more pressure on our teachers, no. That's, I mean that sincerely, okay. End of my speech.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rosales. Uh, no, I'm all, these questions are just, um, I'm just asking because I just want to know what the impact to each student will be as far as, as, you know, because they've already been scored and tested throughout their, throughout their school life. And I, this is another new way of doing an assessment. I just want to make sure that, uh, student, each student, no matter where they live, that, that not, they're not going to be impacted negatively because of a computer, you know? I just want to make sure that it's all been thought out well, has been tested thoroughly. Uh, to me, this is too soon, but it's, it's not my call. So that's why I'm asking these questions. It's nothing, I know that we have prepared as best as we can, but I just want to make sure that we ask those questions once this is done. That we just, like Mr. Rosales says, we just don't stand by, we ask questions, questions and more questions.
Absolutely, and your questions are valid. And as much information as we get, we'll be happy to share it with you as well.
Um, I have a little, uh, question myself. Uh, is there any recourse after these things are graded and we see maybe some trends that are not, um, not really, um, fair to our community? Is there any recourse to talking to the T E A or to, to who? To, is there or is it just done? Wow.
Some of the same issues that, uh, that we're all bringing up have been expressed, uh, across the state, uh, by any number of organizations. T C, T U C, um, the, uh, teachers associations, the administrators associations, they just feel like it's too aggressive, um, too bold, given the fact that we're only two years removed from, from a pandemic. And that it would be, um, kind and fair to allow teachers and schools and districts, uh, to get a couple of years under their belt, uh, a little normalcy before we move, um, and allow the, uh, the assessment to evolve. Uh, you know, Mike works for the governor. Uh, the governor and his, uh, government, uh, I think have, um, an agenda. Uh, and that agenda may involve, uh, promoting rationale for at least being open to vouchers and school savings accounts and charter schools. And this plays right into it. If, if school districts can't step up and perform well, it reinforces their argument. So, uh, I think what Dr. Chacon explained is true. They're going to collect all of the, the data, the performance. Uh, the one thing that I think helps us is that, um, the governor never wants to be embarrassed when compared to other states in the country. So unlike what we were used to growing up, you had, you know, 70% uh, was a C, 80% was a B, 90%, so on and so forth. What they've done for the last, uh, two decades is they wait to see how students perform and then they adjust the line. And that line becomes not 70% of 100, but that line becomes 70% of the average, right? So it's, they create a bell curve with the results they get. And if the majority of students in the state are not performing at grade level or above grade level, then it, uh, by de facto reduces statewide performance to something less than 100%. So what you're doing is you're really getting a 70%, not from 100%, but you're getting 70% from a 65%, which then becomes a 40%. And that's what they'll do. Um, they may be a little bit more aggressive because if he really wanted, um, to support us, uh, he'd provide the resources coupled with ESER monies, coupled with, uh, allowing us to, um, serve under the old system for at least a three to five-year period before he really, um, increased the standards. But that isn't necessarily the interest or the agenda in Austin right now.
Pretty interesting.
Yeah, it's interesting times for sure. Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you so much. It was very, very informative. Okay, at this time, we're required to do our annual report, uh, of the board continuing education hours. Under the State Board of Education rule, completing required continuing education each year of the service is a ba- basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. As board president, I am required to announce the name of each member who has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continued, continuing education and is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. The requirements for training are measured as of the first anniversary of the date of the trustee's election or appointed or two-year anniversary of his or her previous training as applicable. There are seven training areas for board members, continuing education, local district orientation, number two is orientation to the Texas Education Code. Number three is post-legislative update to the Texas Education Code. Four is team building. Five is additional continuing education. Six, evaluating student academic performance and setting goals. Seven, identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking and other maltreatment of children. Number eight is school safety. To the extent applicable to each board member, I will announce the completion or deficiency as to the required training. For members who are still have, for members who still have time remaining to complete required training, I will announce those board members who have scheduled time, timely training and those who have not yet scheduled the training. At the conclusion of this announcement, I will announce any board member's training in excess of the continuing education requirement. Local district orientation, not applicable. No new board member were required to complete local district orientation training for the time period covered by this announcement. Orientation to the Texas Education Code, no applicable. No new members were required to complete the orientation to the Texas Education Code training for the time period covered by this announcement. Post-legislative update to the Texas Education Code, not applicable. No board members were required to complete post-legislative update to the Texas Education Code training for the time period covered by the, this announcement. Team building. The following board members have completed the annual team building training. Trustees Carlos J. Bustillos, Connie Woodruff, Shane Hagerty, Mike Rosales, Cruz A. Ochoa Jr., Soltero, Soltero G. Ramirez and Catherine R. Lucero. Additional continuing education is applicable. The following board members have completed the additional continuing education requirements. Trustee Carlos J. Bustillos, Connie Woodruff, Shane Hagerty, Mike Rosales, Cruz A. Ochoa Jr., Soltero G. Ramirez and Catherine R. Lucero. Evaluating student academic performance and setting goals. This training must be, the following board members have completed the biannual training. training on evaluating student academic performance and setting goals. Trustees Carlos J. Bustillos, Connie Woodruff, Shane Hagerty, Mike Rosales, Cruz A. Ochoa Jr., Soltero G. Ramirez, Catherine R. Lucero. Identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children. The following board members have completed the bi- bi- biennial training on identifying and reporting abuse and trafficking. Trustees Carlos J. Bustillos, Connie Woodruff, Shane Hagerty, Mike Rosales, Cruz A. Ochoa Jr., Soltero G. Ramirez, and Catherine R. Lucero. School safety. The following board members have completed the biennial training on school safety. Trustees Carlos J. Bustillos, Connie Woodruff, Shane Hagerty, Mike Rosales, Cruz A. Ochoa Jr., Soltero G. Ramirez, and Catherine R. Lucero. Exceeding required continuing education. Board member Carlos J. Bustillos exceeded the required amount of continuing education by 7.5 additional hours. Board member Connie Woodruff exceeded the required amount of continuing education by 33 additional hours. Board member Cruz A. Ochoa Jr. exceeded the required amount of continuing education by 48 hours, 48 additional hours. Board member Catherine Lucero exceeded the required amount of continuing education by one additional hour. Board member Mike Rosales exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by 13 additional hours. Board member Shane Hagerty exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by .25 additional hours. Board member Soltero G. Ramirez exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by 45.5 additional hours. All right, that's done. We had to do that. It's required by law. Now, let's see. We go to our regular agenda, the consent items. We have two con- items under consent. Is there any discussion on the minutes of the March 22, 2023 workshop, or regular board meeting, or the monthly financials? If there's no discussion, may I have an electronic motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration.
Miss, thank you, Ms. Woodruff. We have a second by Mr. Rosales. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. The results are five in favor, none opposed. And we move on to the action items. Number one, nomination for the Texas Association of School Boards 2023 Superintendent of the Year. Is there any discussion? I would like to say something. In his nine-year tenure as Isleta I S D, Dr. De La Torre has introduced a new era of innovative thinking with an agenda that includes a steady yet strategic climb towards becoming one of the state's top-rated school districts in 2022, and a stunning transformation of the district's schools and facilities through the successful passage of nearly $1 billion in voter-approved facility bonds. He has breathed a vibrant new life into our 108-year-old district, launching our schools and programs into the 21st century for one simple purpose, to provide our children with a relevant, world-class educational experience that positions them to thrive in a changing global economy. Any other discussion?
I do have something to say. Um, the last few years in particular have been, uh, difficult because we've had to make some very, very hard decisions in the schools that we need to consolidate, in the resources that we need to put together for students. And I feel that, um, Dr. De La Torre's leadership, he's not cutting schools just to say, okay, we're cutting this school. And one of our favorite sayings is, um, in putting them into a, a building that's, that's old and, and going from one old place to another old place and not providing students with better opportunities into the schools that they're going into. And he's done that, and he's helped us to do that. And, um, that's one of the hardest things that a school district can do, is go into the community and, uh, tell them, you know, we're, we're going to have to close your little neighborhood school that is important to everybody in that community, but is to give kids a better opportunity. And I believe that because we've been able to do those things and because Dr. De La Torre has led in those things, that, um, that's one of the reasons why our district is as successful as it is. So I just want to thank, uh, Dr. De La Torre for, for helping us through these difficult times with, uh, people who have very strong emotional reactions, and they're, they deserve to have these reactions. Those schools were, were vibrant, and they, uh, helped many, many of us, um, get a good education, but helping lead us into new times where we can provide the children of today technology, the things that they need to succeed in a 21st century environment.
Thank you.
May I try? I just wanted to say, um, Dr. De La Torre, it is, it is true to have consistency. And we have, right now, it's consistent with Dr. De La Torre. So many years, um, working with the district, putting his vision, putting, um, our kids, our teachers, um, and always thinking of them, and which way this direction, which the direction the, the, the district was going to go in. It's always been in the right direction. Every year, we see improvement, and to the point that this year, we are A-rated. And I just want to say, um, thank you for your hard work and your team's hard work, and you truly deserve this in the utmost way. Thank you.
Thank you. Last night, I had the pleasure of, uh, of, uh, attending a, uh, an open house at one of our schools, and Dr. De La Torre defined, uh, what's happened in our district as a, as a renaissance. He defined it, uh, as, as, you know, what happens when you're a shrinking school district, and you have to make hard decisions. I, I, I'll tell you what, I'm, I'm just amazed, because I could have never imagined or envisioned how our district was going to look eight years ago or 10 years ago, um, when we started this process. And, uh, I'm not even sure if, if we understood totally how it was going to look when this all happened. And so, one of the big reasons for our success as a district is by maintaining our superintendent for as long as we have. It's lent stability, um, to the board as well, because of that relationship that he has with the board. But it's also lent stability with the, the staff. It's also lent stability with the cabinet. And these folks, and for the public and anybody who's listening, this is the hardest working group of people you have ever met. And when Dr. Chacon was talking about all the academic preparation, um, you have no idea what it's taken for us to get from here to there. And so, not only that, um, having a wonderful environment to work in, having schools that we can be proud of, um, doing business the right way. Um, and I think that all speaks for itself. This is long overdue. I think this community already knows, uh, and folks in the know already know. And I believe that, uh, that, uh, Isleta I S D, under the leadership of Dr. De La Torre, um, have redefined how districts not only should run, but also, when you meet these particular circumstances, like we have, um, we have rewritten the book about what you need to do and the hard decisions you need to make, and the direction you have to go. So, uh, congratulations, Dr. De La Torre. I, I'm confident that, uh, this is certainly your year.
I'm still waiting for the vote. I don't want to get ahead of myself. But, yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, I was going to wait until.
Let me if it's.
Yes.
I, I, I will say everything you told me to say. Eight years ago, I got here, um, I was Neil Fite, and, um, had the pleasure of meeting Dr. De La Torre. And if you will, as a newcomer, especially when you're in the business world, you know, you, you, you have to assess people. Uh, who am I dealing with? Is this individual really? So we've gone through a, a process of I observing the qualities of leadership this man has. And I've said this over and over and over again for the past eight years. We are blessed to have the quality of leadership that this gentleman brings to the table. Now, if you go back eight years ago, remember the bond? We restructured it. He restructured it. Thus consequently, we had the opportunity of having not one bond, but two bonds. $845 million, 17 projects, all under budget and on time. That in itself says what this caliber of individual this guy is. He knows how to put a team, and he follows through. See, there's people that know how to make a team, but there's few people that know how to coach a team after they create a team. He has those qualities. Some hard decisions. I guess the biggest one that we faced was the, the, um, the epidemic, oh, the pandemic, did we, epidemic, pandemic. That, that changed the game plan. Did he, was he able to be versatile? Absolutely. He engaged, and we figured out, you all figured out how to maintain order and keep on marching. Uh, you look at the, um, at the consolidation. When I first came on 10, eight years ago, membership was, or not, the enrollment was 47,000. Today, we're at 35,225. We got to be cautious, and he is a very cautious man. He understands numbers. Excuse me. And so consequently, we're now at the point where we're gloating. Yesterday, I attended a meeting, and I passed out some, some, uh, speaking points. A-rated. Former mayor was there, and I gave him those, those talking points just to let him understand how hard this gentleman has worked. And you people out here in the, in the audience that are left, how, how dedicated you have been in these eight years. And yes, we've had to consolidate, and it is, it's a difficult issue. When, like Connie said, uh, we have to do things. But remember, keep in mind, and I always keep in mind one thing. Each of these schools that were being utilized for 200 or 300 students were capable of 700 or 800. That's costing the taxpayer about $1 million a school. This is the vision that we need in terms of leadership. When we get to these, these points that need to be made, or decisions need to be made, he's able to figure out a plan, uh, and, and I appreciate that. There's some other things I'd like to talk to you, but I can't, because it, it's those things we worked around in my school, but if things worked out. And I am confident that regardless, that what happens, that we have a leader that's going to continue being the leader that we need in El Paso, in the Isleta School District. And I'm going to say one thing, too. When they look at Isleta, I'm not saying they're looking up or down on us. They want to be like us, and we should want them to be like us. Don't look down on anyone. Bring them up, because this is going to improve a lot of all our citizens, of all our students, into the future. I'm finished. Did I miss anything that you told me to say? No, I, I truly appreciate this man. Oh, you're right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I do have other, other things to say, but, uh, I'm going to keep it brief. Uh, when I started on the board, uh, that was six years ago, and we had our first meeting, and some of you could recall that I said, "I trust no one in this room." And I meant it. I said, "Trust goes both ways. It has to be earned. Earn through, um, day-to-day activities in the, in the long run, how we work together. What are your perspectives? How do you treat others besides us, who are board members?" And that has, has come through, and, you know, we had some hard times. Don't believe me, we've had some hard times, but in the long run, I think, uh, I trust him. I trust him because he has shown through every day, and sometimes he's not, you know, he's, uh, tired, but, uh, we're all tired, but he has come through. Our community has seen the great improvements that have come about because of these bond projects. My own grandchildren have gone through these schools, and they are enjoying the, not only the academics, but it's also the environment that we have been able to provide for them. And Dr. De La Torre, I think this has long, been long overdue, but because we've been under a lot of pressure through the pandemic and everything else, that now I, I think it's the right time to acknowledge you, acknowledge you for your leadership, and, and through this resolution, I hope, uh, you understand that we appreciate what you've done for all of us, the community, my kids, as well as the taxpayers. So, thank you. All right, so if no further discussion, may I have an electronic motion? Mr. Rosales?
If I may, I move to approve a resolution to the Board of Trustees nominating Dr. Xavier De La Torre as Texas Association of School Boards 2023 Superintendent of the Year.
We have a second, why I miss Connie Woodruff. Please cast your electronic votes. Results are five in favor, none opposed. Congratulations.
Thank you. Just very briefly, thank you very much. Um, this is, uh, the, the fourth time that I've been nominated by a board. And after the third time, I swore that I would never, never pursue it again. And I think I spoke to some of you, and I just said, um, I don't believe, I don't believe in the system, and my reasons for that, uh, it would be indelicate for me to go into it, but I've seen, uh, past nominees and past winners. And my standard line was always, um, "I don't care whether I'm the Region 19 Superintendent of the Year. The only thing I care about is, am I your Superintendent of the Year?" By you, I mean the seven of you and, uh, and people in the audience. But, um, but you and the people in the audience deserve it. And...
We understand, Dr. De La Torre.
I just, it's, it's selfish, because the Superintendent of the Year recognition is really not recognizing any one individual. I think the recognition applies to, um, the board. I think it, uh, it certainly applies to members of my cabinet.
But I also think it's a reflective of who we are. But I also think it's a reflective of who we are.
Right. So it's selfish for anyone to say, I'm just not going to play this game anymore because it's really not about me. I think everybody here present tonight and some who are not present tonight have made everything possible. And they deserve to be recognized. You deserve to be recognized for all the work that we've done on behalf of our students. Our teachers deserve to be recognized. And so when people decide to go in a different direction, they're dismissing all of the work that teachers and coaches and support staff, my cabinet. And that's not, that's not fair to them. I could care less, to be honest with you. I really do appreciate it and I'm very humbled by it. But I care because you're dismissing, not just me, you're dismissing a lot of people that for eight years, I mean, almost 10 years, have literally turned the school district around. And that's not fair to them. So I will do my best. But I'll do my best for them and for you. Not because, I mean, I don't want to be disrespectful, but Region 9 is Region 19.
Well, you know, it's, like I said, it's, it's an honor that has a resolution that has come from the board and your staff and everybody. Whatever happens, it happens. You know, we can't influence what happens outside of here. But we are doing our part to recognize you for who you are.
I guess that's what I'm saying. For me, this is enough.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
And like I told you a long time ago, we, if we get recognized for what we've done, that's great. If we don't, that's still okay. Because we are going to continue doing the best we can every day for, because that's our job.
Yep.
That's our, that's our goal, not our job. That's really our life. Our children are our lives, you know, life for us. And we do that. And that's why we all sit here on the board. We don't sit here because just to, oh, look at who I am or anything like that. We sit here to help our kids get through, through this educational process and give them the best that we can. And I think we have that, done that. And I salute you, I salute ourselves, I salute everybody. And.
You just hit it on the nail. We're not here to, to, we're here to do a job.
Yeah.
Not to be recognized.
No, I mean, recognition comes. I mean, we're very humble. We, we accept it for what it is. But we're not looking out for that, you know, ourselves. I don't think, none of us are beating a drum that, look at us, look at us. No. It's just that, look, we do what we can, the best we can. And under the circumstances, sometimes they have been a little trying, but we have been able to, to come through it. And it's working together, all of us, all of us. All our teachers, all our kids, all our coaches, all our custodians. Everyone has participated and embraced this, this new philosophy that we have here at YISD. And, and again, you're the leader. So unfortunately, and unfortunately, it shines on you. So just take it for what it's at.
Yeah, I, I did not mean to even imply that I'm not grateful. I, I'm humbled and I'm grateful. But I'm also acutely aware of how we've gotten here. And it isn't from this seat. It's from the seat out there. And they know it. We've got great principles. We've got a great system, I think. And y'all have given us, you've given us some latitude. You know, we've, we've come out and we've irritated some of your constituents at times. And you've never folded on us. And it would have been easy to say, we're not, we're not doing this. There, there are too many people that are upset. And you've had our back. And that's all we can ask. And obviously, they're beyond competent. I may only do one thing well, but it's super important. I recognize, recruit, and hire incredible talent. And when you do that, you know, it takes care of itself.
It still takes leadership. It just doesn't happen by itself. And, you know, so I just want to say congratulations.
Thank you. Didn't mean to make it so long. Could have just said thank you.
No, it's good to get, you know, our feelings out there. I mean, we are human. I mean, we, we, I sit up here. But we are human, we have feelings, we have, you know, we look forward to whatever happens after this. We've gone through some trying times, like we all know, but we look forward to some good years. And we're just finishing up our bond stuff. Our schools look great. Our, our kids are doing great. So, you know, all we can do is, is keep moving forward. And, and what I told you, we never look back. We never look back to see who's behind us. We just lead, we just lead, period. And, and that's what our job is, all of us here. We're leaders. We've done fairly well, I think. But it's all a team and it takes a team, just like a family. All right? Okay, so on that note, may I have a motion to adjourn? Adjourn.